Evening, everybody. It is, what is it, November? No, excuse me, Jan- January twenty-third at five thirty-one, we will get started tonight, calling to order. Uh, before we open it up for public comment, I did think it was worth, uh, just sharing this quick note. Shannon, uh, informed me of this earlier this week, brought it to my attention. But I think it's worthwhile. Congratulations to Superintendent Barry was named one of New Hampshire Business Reviews, uh, two thousand twenty-five New Hampshire two hundred leader. So congratulations. Uh, so with that, I will open it up to our first agenda item for public comment tonight. Steve, I'm gonna pull up the Zoom here to check out the online scene, but if anybody in person would like to come up and speak, you'll have three minutes. I will give you a warning at thirty seconds when we get close to the time, but we'll, uh, open it up first. Just come on up to the chairs. You can drag a chair a little bit closer if you want, but the owl is pretty good picking you up.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Jason, thank you.
Never mind, never mind.
Not gonna pull back you.
No worries.
And when you're ready, sir, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So Michael Almeida, I'm a citizen of Amherst. Wanted to take a minute to, uh, appreciate the board for voting for the fiscal, fiscally responsible option with the twenty-year, um, bond, uh, earlier this year. I highly, uh, so I looked at the agenda and it sounds like you guys are gonna vote again on which option you choose. Um, just wanna state for everybody, I mean, we're looking at anywhere from a six million dollar increase to a twenty-three million dollar increase in the total cost. I know that's not what shows on the, the warrant article itself, but I think it's important to consider. And, uh, I do believe the twenty-year was the best option, so I just wanted to say I appreciate you guys had already voted on that. I know you have to re-vote because some things have changed, but I, I highly urge the board to consider that, uh, significant difference in total costs. But thank you.
And just for, for clarity, Michael, we had it on the agenda to discuss, but it doesn't mean that a vote will come up if, if there's no appetite, no motion or made, we'll just continue on as this, but so just, just for the official, uh, clarity there. Thank you. When you're ready, Mr. Kaplan.
Aaron Kaplan, Amherst, New Hampshire. And years past, I have told this board the horrible events that occurred in the community of Crown Heights decades ago, and it highlighted the importance of finding common ground with your neighbors, especially those you disagree with. In that vein, I asked this board to focus on rebuilding trust with the community after the last election. An untrusted board is an ineffective board. However, at your last meeting, I attempted to offer praise in areas where it was deserved and expressed disappointment in others. Chair Gothier had no problem with the praise, but began acting disrespectfully to me as soon as I offered valid respectful criticism. When I asked for the same courtesy of extended to you time and time again, a tirade from Mr. Gothier followed. This mirrored previous tirades directed at others in this community. I was accused of attempting to take over the meeting and having a chicken shoot, whatever that means. I did everything this board asked, that board leadership asked of me. I waited patiently for promised responses that never came. You demand that citizens ask questions only pertaining to the agenda and ask that emails are sent to request agenda items or ask questions out of the public view. You then refuse to place them on the agenda, resulting in a vicious circle in which citizens are forced back to square one, being told to not ask questions outside the agenda. The disrespectful manner in which I was treated is not what is most disappointing. It is the track record of similar treatment to the community at large. Those who dare ask questions are often dismissed, stonewalled, and even removed from the conversation. You refuse to allow me to serve on a committee that doesn't even have alternates available. When I wrote, I would like to help ensure that barrels are no longer having to be placed in hallways to catch falling and water damaged ceiling tiles, and that every occupant of those buildings deserves nothing less, you still refuse me to allow to serve on B and G railings and grounds. It wasn't for lack of experience or commitment to this district. Worse, board leadership unanimously decided to bar public comment at any committee, keeping the public at arms length from their neighbors that volunteer. Worse yet, board leadership now claims this didn't happen. You've apparently listened to those that told you to disregard a poising voices, round yourselves with people that support you. I am not criticizing citizens serving on committees that might disagree with me on certain points. I believe they would agree it would be wrong to remove any one of them simply for their opinions on district issues. If so, then they must also agree that it was wrong to remove prior members from committee assignments for voicing the wrong opinions. I extended an olive branch to this board after the last election, asking everyone to focus on rebuilding trust in this board, as many in the community feel that they've been silenced. They have good reason for believing so. When I spoke of Crown Heights, I did it to show what happens when people seek out and find common ground. Were you listening? To find the answer, ask yourself one simple question. Would I be proud if the children in K through eight emulated my behavior? In other words, am I leading by example? Therein lies your answer. Mr. Fritz, I do appreciate you always insisting on honesty. And Mrs. Bean, although we disagree on some points, I much appreciate the manner in which you've treated others over the last year. My disappointment is directed primarily at board leadership and anyone that disagrees with this, that agrees with this behavior. That concludes my comment. I would like to submit this into the record. This is an email from Chair Leadership, Chair Gothier, and, um.
The three minutes is up at this point. You can submit it to the record if you wanna just explain.
And can I give this so that you can read it around and turn, turn it into DNA for the record?
If you'd like to do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Please, everyone around this table, read the highlighted point, just showing how dishonest that claim that.
Public comment was not barred, the public was not barred from talking to the committees.
Anybody else in person tonight? If you'd like to join via the Zoom, you can raise your hands. And then turn on your camera. At this point, hopefully you'll know the routine. But seeing that nobody, uh, raising their hand online, anybody else in person? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item tonight. So, a two-part process here. Number one, uh, we had just questions that had popped up in some discussions and questions raised on the vote that we had for financing. Uh, financing the bond, we had voted on twenty-year level principal, which was about seventy-four million total, and then obviously it started with a high watermark of one dollar and ninety-two cents is what the official impact is in year two. Uh, we did get notice that the bond sale this last week was three point eight four percent for the interest rate, which was slightly lower, if I remember correctly, from our original estimates. So looking at the total amount, we'd be spending, or we'd be spending with interest over the course of twenty years, seventy-four million, five hundred sixty thousand, forty-four. So that is what our current vote is right now, uh, with that financing. Uh, there were questions at public hearing and in our, in other meetings, do we want to look at another way to finance this to potentially lower the tax burden on the folks that are in town now, spreading it out so that anybody that moves in, say, year ten, they would be paying similar amounts or higher amounts, um, than what they would be if we did the twenty-year level principle. Knowing that some of those other items, whether we extended the bond level principal to twenty-five or thirty years, Steve, you wanna share that PowerPoint? You've got it. Or if we wanted to switch to a level debt principal where it offers lower overall costs in the beginning for the folks that are here now, and as folks move in, their share of the pie would be the same. This is what we looked at two years ago with the level, uh, level debt for the overall eighty million dollar, eighty-three million dollar bond we had originally, and then last year we switched it over to level principal in twenty years, uh, twenty-five years. This year we voted on twenty years for that fifty-two point nine million and then twenty-one point six million in interest. So the top option is what we voted on right now. Do we have a motion to open it up to change that? Or if, have anybody wanna share any opinions on if we wanna look at changing that to a different financing option to potentially lower overall cost, or lower yearly cost for taxpayers that are in town now? And then spreading that debt burden out, increasing the debt burden, but spreading it out more evenly over the tax base as we go through the next ten, twenty years.
I don't know. Okay.
So I just, I'm really torn. Um, so I understand that the board receives negative feedback in the past with the level debt approach. And if I were funding a personal project for my home, I would choose to save on interest and pay more upfront. Definitely. Um, but for the community, I appreciate that the level debt payments remain consistent throughout the term of the loan, spreading the cost out to folks equitably as they cycled in and out of town. I like level principal because we minimize our interest cost. Um, and I'm, but I'm just, I'm concerned about asking a portion of our population to bear the higher initial payment. So that's where I would entertain a conversation. I don't know that I'm ready to make any type of motion. But I would be interested in, in having a conversation if the rest of the board had the appetite.
Yeah, I think we can have the conversation without that motion too. So feel free, anybody that has thoughts on this, and if somebody at some point wants to make a motion to change, we can certainly entertain that. So, Jason, your thoughts?
I mean, I, I guess my thoughts were similar. Like, I, I don't know that I'm at the spot of making a motion. I also wanna be respectful of our time and know that we have a you know, full agenda. So if there really is no true appetite to make a change, then I don't know that we could have, you know, a lengthy conversation. But I do think there is, right, we've received, to Shannon's point, we did level that a couple of years ago and received feedback that that was not really appreciated, uh, by the public at large. Um, but I do, if I remember correctly, at a recent board meeting, remember some public comments about there was some appetite from members of the public about us revisiting this conversation in terms of, you know, backloading maybe a little bit more of the payment and spreading it out a little bit more and, and having that conversation. So I think for the purposes of thoroughness and openness, I think there is a conversation to be, to be had based on the feedback that we've received. To be honest with you, I mean, I'll just throw it out like my own personal opinion. I will vote for whatever is going to create the best environment for Article twelve. So if somebody knows what that magic answer is, you let me know, because I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, uh, something though that I'm concerned about is Article twelve is critical. So are is the funding of future projects at the Amherst Middle School and at Clark. So in Steve's memo, I think he touched on the debt service in one of his charts. Um, and so maybe, I don't know if it's appropriate, um, Tom, to, to ask Steve or Amy to speak to what these different options mean in terms of the debt service and what that does to our overall budget and our future projects, or? Is, is.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Steve, do you wanna just explain briefly, uh, if we were to change, or essentially what this means? If we bond this project, yes, it's gonna be a, a dollar ninety-two is the first year under level debt, or the second year, I should say, first year is interest only. Second year goes to a dollar ninety-two per thousand on the increase in taxes, and it's a four point six three million dollar year two budget impact. You wanna just briefly explain what that means and, and what that does again to financing or, or might to, sorry?
No, I, I just wanna preface the, 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 uh, the conversation that Steve was talking to a little bit and Amy kinda created some work on, that came out of conversations via, you know, the S A U office, and whenever we have conversations around budget development, facility projects, warrant articles, I'm reminded often that a large portion of, of homeowners in town do not have children who are utilizing currently the schools. And some of these people have fixed incomes and that, you know, they are in different spots, as they want to support budgets and want to support projects and trying to figure out how to do that and manage that, when, you know, I don't have the exact numbers, so don't ever hold me to this, but like sixty to seventy percent of the homeowners, you know, I once heard it was a little bit more, do not currently have school-aged children. And so thinking about it, that's where kind of the conversation in our office and hearing some of the other things, I is added to that, that conversation, I'm like, then I think there's truth to that. I do think there is that sentiment. I do think there is a portion of that population that in our community that feel that way. So I think that's where, you know, I contributed to the, the conversation, asking Steve to, to look into it a little bit more with Amy, because I think we're obligated to do that. It's not just the families with children, it's the people who fund our operating budgets and our facility projects. So just wanted to clarify.
No, and I appreciate that, Mike. And, and I also think it's worth mentioning that when we add this in there, when you get the bond, it goes into the budget at that point. So if we had a bond right now, it's gonna be just added to whatever our normal budget is. And so that year two, you're adding four point six million on top of the budget if we can stick with the financing plan we have. And then you're adding on whatever other increases we have next year, new bus contract, et cetera. So it's not just that dollar ninety-two impact, it's the dollar ninety-two plus all the other budget stuff that we're gonna have in that year. So I mean, that in my mind, when I'm looking at the numbers for this project, it's easy to have that, you know, it's easy to ignore that that's only part of what's gonna be on the tax, um, sheet that year. So, sorry.
I was just gonna say, so what you have in your packet, um, to consider is the, um, bond pay, or the, the payment, the annual payment as well as the tax impact for the first three years for the three different terms, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty, both for level debt and level principal. And in addition, you have the principal interest and total cost um, for those three terms and that type of financing. So there's four slides that break out all of that information so that you can compare and contrast to be able to make a decision. So I just wanna make sure the board has, has all that information.
Yeah, we have it on the screen now as well, Amy. So we can see that. Thank, but we can toggle back between total and annual impact for both, uh, both different options with the different yearly totals in there as well.
Yeah.
So now I have, you know, I appreciate the last couple of years taking a look at the total cost to, to the entire community. Um, but I also know we have to, um, start living and managing, when, when it passes, managing the implementation of that into a budget. And that's the challenge. And, and I, a smaller district, but a project passed level debt. Um, and it was a stable, the goal of that board was stabilize the tax rate and provide equity over the experience alone. And then how do you live with, how do you incorporate that into a budget? And through building in grounds, for example, working, um, you know, this year on, on a separate article is a four hundred thousand dollar raise and appropriate article for the AMS project. And, um, Mr. Fritz talked about instead of doing it every other year, doing two hundred thousand dollars every year to support that raise and appropriate. So what kind of capacity are you leaving when you go to a dollar ninety-two versus a dollar thirty-seven? It's about a fifty-three cent difference. And that fifty-three cents is actually the entire tax rate of this year's budgeting. So it's just one, so I, my job, talking with Mike and talking with the board, talking with Amy, is making sure the board understands that when it incorporates in a budget, you could the dollar ninety-two and a dollar thirty-three, that's capacity that actually is AMS and a, a possible budget increase. And that's the challenge, because what you don't wanna do, I don't think, well, you just get, what may happen is you, you vote for level principal, you get the dollar ninety-two tax rate, and then you ask the superintendent next year to cut four hundred thousand dollars for the budget. And then it's services, and then it's student experience and that stuff, when you can save four hundred thousand dollars for this year. Now, they're right about, if you're looking at this as the total cost of the entire, that is, but, you know, and I also, so I've had an interesting journey. I've been in New Hampshire for thirty-seven years. And when I was just starting out with my wife, I would have appreciated the smallest possible tax impact as we stretched to buy a home in New Hampshire, and I think that's where some families are right now. And also, as many know, I'm about to become fixed, uh, I'm about to retire and become fixed income. And to ask me on fixed income to pay the next year the highest possible tax rate of the entire journey, just beware of that. And then how are we gonna ask them for more next year to support AMS? Because AMS is, is really phase one of multiple significant phases and the other obligations, including and, and we know that we're on year five of the transportation contract, year five with transportation is always a very much, uh, uh, a participant, right? It's nice because we haven't had those escalating increases that other districts have had, but that's coming. When you put something out to bid, it's not gonna be as low as it is now. We know what's happening with drivers, right? The driver shortage and how we had up salary and benefits, we know that. So I'm just trying to, and Mike and I and Amy are just trying to make sure the board not only understands, yes, the savings of it, but what kind of restrictions are you going to put when you take the highest possible tax rate for this project next year and then still have to fund AMS, Clark, transportation, special ed, you're two years away from retirement actuarial increase, so that's really good. Um, but they also have other obligations. So it's really just making sure you're looking at the global long-term picture, not about right now. Because fifty-three cent difference for a taxpayer is meaningful. And it's meaningful, what kind of capacity? One of the things that Amy talks about a lot is JFA. JFA. And when I was here, JFA, they tried to coordinate projects between districts to, to have some sensitivity to the tax rate. Well, if, if Amherst goes the highest possible tax rate, there's also a beginning facility study at Soegan regarding, um, science labs. And the Mont Vernon is tangentially related in this because of how it impacts on theirs. There's also a facility project going over there. My gut says if we were all sitting around the table planning out bonds, planning out, there would be some energy about, look, let's go level debt and leave some capacity for someone else, because that fifty-three cents could be filled up somewhere else. Perhaps not. I may be completely all bet, by the way. And this is why we, we talked about last night, this board represents the values of this community. Mike and, Mike, Amy and I are just giving the entire big picture, different options and implications. And yes, I had, I was a superintendent in a small district trying to build a budget when the first year of a building project that was the smallest we could make it, and was still brutally difficult, because in ninety-one percent residential in Huffington, the highest tax rate in the state, we passed the project, and now how do you fund education when you have that anchor on your budget? And one thing that we did in that project, as we were a single district, that project fixed all three schools at once. This project doesn't. This project takes care of an elementary school, this project, and I'm very, very pleased and excited about the work here phase. Right? We have proof of concepts, twelve rooms, extreme makeover, pay as you go, but Clark still has stuff and you get some other initiatives. So this is, I respect and admire, the board is gonna reflect the values of this community and do what they think is best, that's the job. I hope that Mike, I, Amy, is the spirit, the spirit of this is just to think about the day after the bond is passed and the ability to support budgets that create the consistent student experience and continually the good work of this board. That's it. I respect and admire, and, and if I clog this up, if I overstep, Michael kick me on the table, it'll be okay. But that was the goal of this, was to provide not just the bond the day after the bond. Because when I was driving around, I said, we gotta make sure we leave capacity to do the work that's necessary in these schools, and I'm concerned if we go the highest possible tax rate, there won't be enough capacity to do it, and all of a sudden we're gonna be impacting student educational experience program, and that wasn't part of this. That fair? Did I, I apologize.
That's fine.
Great. Um, so Steve. I think your comments are, are focusing on the early years, like the second year, right? So there's a time preference here as well. And I think, you know, Amherst is going to have a school system in twenty years from now too. So I, I'm curious, Amy, while we're talking about the waterfall, waterfall plot, Amy, for the one we already voted for, what, what year does it reach? One thirty-seven?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. So you're talking about fourteen years till we get to, uh, that same tax rate, and, and that one thirty-seven, how many years is that? Twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd have fourteen years of higher impact than the opt already voted for, and then you'd have six years or five years less, less.
To go to level.
And then zero.
And then you're right, zero for five years.
Go, go to twenty-five, yeah. So ten years of lower and fourteen years of higher. So it's a matter of how do you, um, how you, how would your time preference? And I, you know.
But not to interrupt, I also wanna know, there's also time value of money. So the people who are here at fourteen years of increased wage, potentially, sorry.
Yeah, that's true. That's right. That's right. Yeah. Um, we're all aware of that nowadays. Okay, so that's one, that's one thing. I just wanted to understand the time values. If it was six years or fourteen years, that's, to me, that helps change the calculation a little bit. It's not the highest tax, it's, it's the lowest total tax.
Yes.
Community. And so it does free up more money for future years. And another thing is, having the waterfall be the steepest option means that every year gets easier too. So as we make these discussions for year two, those voters are remembering, oh, yeah, two years ago in March, I voted for the seventy-four million dollar spending. That's why this is the tax rate. And then we say, well, in year three, you know, we have more money for the student activities and on and on and on. But this whole conversation is like razor-thin at Jason's point, like about how this is passed. And so I, I think the way all this passed, I think, is you have to convert people who are previously no voters to yes voters. I don't think you're gonna just get out of, of, of the new voters that show up that didn't vote last year. You need to win like seventy-five percent of them to get enough, you know, flip to, uh, to win just on that. So you have to flip some no, previous no voters. And so what do those people have in mind? If you're talking about how to win this, how to pass this. And I think spending more money in the long term is, is gonna hurt you. That's my, my belief. But I, I think this razor-thin discussion, to me, shows that the, the price is too high for this community, that we're talking about very low changes to a project, try to eke it over the edge. And I, and I'm prepared to vote no, I'm recommending people to vote for this later tonight, but I, I do want to go to a vote. I wanna see that vote. I want it to be done. I wanna go back, and I wanna do what I wanted to do earlier this year and get separate quotes for, of, you know, a cheaper project that, that doesn't have the, the impact that Steve's talking about. I think when you look at the ways he's talking, holistically across Amherst, there's get, there are better ways for the community to have a school that performs as, or of standards, um, than this one. But so, those are my two cents.
Yeah, thank you. Terry.
Yeah, so I've been through this kind of conversation before, and I was a part of the board that voted for the level debt option. And there were lots of good reasons for it, right? Like, and I believe in those reasons. As I've been rolling this over with, with the latest numbers and looking at, at what we've chosen, um, I remember how, hearing about that car salesman, they, they come in and they say, what do you want your month of payment to be? Not what do you want, you know, what are the features you want with this car? Like, what do you want your month of payment to be? And they kinda work backwards from there, right? And so I, I understand that desire. As somebody who likes to budget myself, um, I used to look at my paycheck like, there's my electric bill, there's my mortgages, or whatever, and then that's like what's left, right? You know, if I, if I got a bonus, it was like, great, that's, that's a dinner out with my husband. That's whatever. And I get that, that is always this trade-off. One of the reasons that we, we went with level debt at one point, and we got a lot of blowback from it, I'll be quite honest, is that people said, yeah, 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 everybody has the same, whether you're doing it the day you voted, or whoever inherits it coming into the community later, you all have same, same skin in the game. It's fairness, equity. And, and I believe in that. I do. To me, the only thing that I would consider would be moving from a twenty-year to a twenty-year level principal to a twenty-year level debt because it has the least amount of total impact for the overall cost. I feel like it still gets you a good interest rate. It still gets you the ability to plan and say, okay, it's gonna be this amount and that amount, because I will say, one thing we tried very hard to do my entire time on this board has been to have fewer peaks and valleys. And so I actually am a huge believer in long-term planning and fewer peaks and valleys. And so for that, I feel like I could support. I could support saying, that seems like a compromise I would be willing to make, like it's a little bit more over the life of it, but it's not ten million more. It's not fifteen million. It's two million more over twenty years. That's something I feel like I could live with, right? That's something I could defend. I could not defend going ten million more to say for a later person, um, you know, I just can't. I can't. And, and so, but I feel like I could meet somewhere in the middle, and I, I would be willing to make a motion to switch still in a twenty-year term, because I don't wanna go to the point. Like, I was pretty excited that we were able to say that even with waiting a year from last year, we, what happened is exactly what we said would happen, without changing anything else about the plan, the cost went up because costs go up year over year for construction. And so for that, we were able to kind of make up some of that as an overall cost by having a shorter term and an interest rate. And so I would still like to stay with twenty years, but I could be persuaded to go with twenty years level debt and say, okay, it's a dollar fifty-seven, that's a little more reasonable, that gives you that cushion part of the, and believe me, when I moved here, I lived in Merrimack, and my older daughter went to Merrimack for her entire twelve years, because that's what I could afford. And then I aspired to come to Amherst for my younger daughter, and she's been, she went through twelve years of this whole system. It was absolutely an aspirational thing. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of affordable housing in Amherst, New Hampshire. And so most people who come here, you kinda come in knowing what you're getting and what you're expecting. And so that, well, you're gonna make more later. We have more millennials and things that are waiting longer to have children, they're starting their careers first, they're kind of coming in a little bit differently. We have more elementary kids families than we had. A lot of people coming in at, at middle school where they could afford to live in Amherst, right? And so some of that has switched over the years. So some of that, I think, has gone away, but I do still think I, I am okay with the equity of saying, everybody gets to have the same skin in the game. But that's, that's still not such a huge difference in the overall cost that's gonna kill us and just kill our chances.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just for purposes of Terry for the math, your twenty-year level principal, the twenty-year level debt's thirty-five cent tax difference in year one, and obviously that will increase as you go down the line. It's a savings of one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine on the average house in Amherst. And then it's obviously about eight hundred thousand on the first year of the budget.
So are you looking at the current top part point or?
I am looking at the.
I think it's even better than that, because I think the bond sales was lower, right? Three point eight to three point four. Amy, do you have those?
No, it, it, it actually, the twenty-year went up. It went from three point seven five to three point eight four percent. And so that's what's reflected here for the twenty-year.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep.
So just make a motion to what you just said.
Sure. I would say in a twenty-year term, but to move to level level, old level principle, the level debt.
I'll second that, Terry, if you want to make that motion.
And again, I I I don't. I took say with enthusiasm because I think that it's such a catch twenty-one, we're screwed if we do, screwed if we don't, but I am trying to look at the big picture. Catch twenty-two, sorry. I just, I'm sorry. I. You can tell I like this. None of nothing about that. There's no perfect way to do it. There just isn't.
No.
And if it, and I'm with Shannon, if it were me and my own personal choice, of course, I would go with level prints. That would just be a no-brainer, right? I would want to pay as as little as possible over the entire term. But but in order to make it as palatable as possible and as fair as possible. I think it's close enough that I am willing to make the motion to go to a level debt, but still at a twenty-year.
I mean, I think the other question is to.
I'll second that first, Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry, guys. I mean, I think. The other question is, is how many people are going to be paying full life of it, right? Like, if it's your personal project, you're paying the full life. Like, if if it's twenty years, there are people in our community who are not going to pay the full life. Of that, on either end of it, right? There'll be people who move, who move in. And they pay over the later portion, there'll be people who either downsize and move out and 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 impact will be different. I mean, so. To your point, Terry, like having a level might be. Might might be right, but I agree. I don't, wouldn't want to go like, I wouldn't want to go for the thirty-year eighty-nine.
Oh, gosh, no. You know, yeah.
So I I my comments on this is, that's what I was thinking as well, Terry. If we were going to propose something, it's going to that. It does knock off eight hundred thousand in that second year of the uh of the bond. So you go from four point six million down to three point eight, which gives you more room for bus contracts. Teacher contracts that we're going to have, that'll be year two potentially of two other new agreements there. So it gives us a little more wiggle room there, reduces the tax impact overall. It's three percent of the difference, so from seventy-four and a half to seventy-seven million, so it's a three and a half percent increase, which I don't like. But we have options to refinance. And then, as Steve has mentioned before, uh, we also have the option, once we get through and the project passes. You can split up how you purchase those bonds as well. So if you did twenty million the first year and then the rest of it the second year, you can split that up. So your first year, your second year impact is even less because you're only doing a portion of the bonds in that first year. So you have some options divided up and then you still have the options of refinancing down the road, so. Uh, I would, I'm inclined to support Terry's motion, even though I don't like the increased cost. I think it does. Make a a better tax impact on the top and it's not as drastic as a level debt that we looked at a couple of years ago. Because it's a smaller project and it's better interest rates. That was some eleven million, I think.
Yeah, and just to remind the board, this vote. Is what you want to put on the warrant, which is going to say in giant bold letters, estimate.
Yes.
The decision is made, once you have the rates, you know, the new rates into the law. And you'll decide and how much you, if you want to take the whole. If you really want to take twenty, thirty, and at that point you decide based on like the rates go down. To be closer up, you know, you may as a different decision. So just to be clear, this isn't binding. You really don't want it to bind the board now because there's so many deltas from now into July.
Right, this is mainly so that we print on the ballot.
Correct. And then the board has the authority.
But this is like anything, I mean, it's estimates all the time.
This is a little bit, this is a little bit different though, Tom, and speaking to bond counsel, typically. Um, the tax impact and amounts are not put onward articles for this. And I know there was a lengthy discussion and a decision to do that, um, but. But in speaking to bond counsel, she was pleased that we did emphasize estimate. Because it will be up to the board to make that final decision based on terms and rates that are available at the time of sale. So even though you are putting this on the ballot, that's, that's really for educating the public. It is not binding you to a decision as far as the term. Um, and the and the financing mechanism. So it's just really important to be aware of that. It it is very different than. Other um warrant articles, even uh the CBAs. Uh, because those, at least you have the information and you can calculate the amounts based on on the people in the position. This is different than that because the board is going to make a final decision at bond sale.
Thank you. That's a good point. Thank you. So Amy, I have a question, bond counsel, maybe you don't know, but um. I'm a little confused with some of the uh. Legal status here. So I read the RSAs on this and it sounds like. If this passes, the bu- the board is authorized to then borrow that sum. And I assumed that they were, that the the board authorized to borrow that sum under those conditions, meaning it would be a twenty-year level debt deck or whatever. But that's not what you're saying.
Nope, no, there, the authorization is to borrow those funds and to appropriate the first year's interest. Which is why that's all that is required in the warrant article.
Okay, so we pay the first year interest and then before the May bond sale or around that May bond sale. The July, sorry, the July meeting, but that the board, the board would be the one that made those decisions on how to. How to um. Okay, that's great. Thank you for clarifying. So I really have no strong thoughts on this then. Got a couple later, this is three million bucks, whatever you guys want, I'll 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 go with the majority.
So with that, I'll call a vote unless anybody else has any other comments. I'll call, so all in favor of amending the uh language for Article twelve. Uh, amending the financing terms to twenty years at level debt. Financing, uh, knowing that that'll be an estimate and then years one through three will be adjusted on the warrant itself. All in favor?
And two, three, four.
Let's do it. Five.
You said you were going with everybody.
I'm going. It's not opposed, yeah, you pre-voted on that one, so. All right, so Amy, are you able to adjust the language on that warrant? Looks like you're in the document already.
Yeah, I'll go in there and do that. Maybe if you guys can go to other, vote on the other warrant. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, Steve, you want to just pull up that document again, just so we can go through the articles and just get the recommendation votes on these?
Which stock, I'm sorry?
Same one, right here, just uh down to slide, down to slide eight, actually.
Sorry, Tom, I'm going to reshare.
Yep.
I didn't realize it was at the back end of that one.
Then you go down to slide eight first. We'll start with thirteen, we'll aim for twelve.
Slide show on this. All right, so the votes we have to do tonight, we did not do in public hearing two weeks ago. We didn't have everybody in in person and I wanted to make sure there was no additional conversation. So we voted to move these to deliberative. Now we are voting on. The actual, uh, our recommendation as a board. So this is what's going to show up in the voter's guide and the deliberative guide and on the warrant as well, saying. Amherst School Board recommends or not recommends this article by a vote of such and such, so. And actually, I don't think it says, they don't, we think we do not recommend. It says it'll recommend it one to four if we voted against it.
That is correct, yeah.
So this will be what our recommendation vote is, so. I will take a motion, uh, actually. Where we did this now. Yeah, no, we do each one, but what's the motion on these? Totally drawing a blank.
To approve.
I'll take a motion to approve this article as presented for the warrant on voting day.
So and and. I'm sorry, if you could do a tally, um. For each of you, so if not, you know, rate, so vote individually, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will. Yeah, we're each article, right?
Each article, each board number.
And you want a voice vote or you want me to just count it and tell you what the vote is?
Um, a voice vote would be great.
We'll do whatever it takes.
Thank you.
All right, so I will have a motion. Do I have a second on accepting this article as written? I have a second, Shannon, and so let's keep those motions the same if we can. Jason to the.
Yeah, yeah, I'll open it in a second. Jason, the motion, and then Shannon, the second. Any points of discussion, great. Right, but. Think on this, these are close numbers, the default and the proposed are hundred and forty-one. Pay apart, right?
Yes.
And we talked about last time, some of the the presentation about things that would be cut or could be cut. But the money is all fungible. Once we approve the budget and the line item, we can cut from the else in that budget if we need to. And I think, you know. We could probably live with the default budget here, but um, some of the things on there would not be covered as last time, so it was kind of a weird chart, but um.
The the only caveat, it might, you might correct me or Steve, the only thing that changes is if there's a brand new line item in a budget category we don't have.
Right.
That technically could not be in the fall. But if it's a teacher, then yeah, a teacher is fungible in terms of a a budget line item, yes.
Yeah, yeah, but even without a line item, if if we choose to fund a line item more or less, as long as it's the same line item, we can do that next year, right? So that's all I want to say. Those those items that were on that chart last month, a lot of questions after the fact, a lot of comment, those are not necessarily the ones that are going to be. Be cut.
Those are just ones that are not made of all.
They could, right, they could be. Um, and I think, I just want to tell them again, I think Mike's team did a really good job of. Looking for the budget that would accomplish the goals of, you know, this community's objectives and and within his um. Staff. So there probably is, you know, more room to cut than had to, but I think this is a really good budget and I I can't wait to support you. Um, push this forward, so.
If you want to vote first, any other points of conversation? Okay, why don't you start?
All right.
First, Fritz, yes. Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes.
Venus.
And that one approved five to nothing, Amy. We will go to Article fourteen, Steve, if you can. This taxation article, four hundred thousand dollars to be appropriated. Uh, to go into the capital reserve maintenance and repair fund or improvement fund, I should say. This will be as one of two contributions that we're putting on the ballot this year, this one again, coming from a new taxation. So I will take a motion to.
Make the motion.
Thank you. To approve it as written. Any further discussion on this one? I'll start the vote with Greg.
Fritz, yes.
Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes?
Venus.
Uh, it was approved five to nothing. Article. I screwed it up, yeah. Article fifteen, this is the capital reserve fund contribution that comes from unassigned fund balance at the end of this fiscal year that we're currently in. Six hundred seventy-five thousand. I will take a motion, this will result in no new taxation. I will take a motion to approve it as written.
I make the motion.
Second.
Any further comments?
Are we on schedule to have this money left over, Amy?
With next meeting is when you'll probably have your first estimate of what it's starting to look like anyway, right? That's typically what we do.
I I usually don't start presenting until April. But I maybe March, usually I, usually April is when I start.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Uh, any other comments?
Greg? Fritz, yes.
Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes?
Venus.
That one is approved five to nothing as well. Article sixteen is the technology expendable trust fund, same situation as the building. It's uh unassigned fund balance surplus at the end of the year. No amount to be raised for taxation. I will take a motion to approve this as written.
Motion.
Second.
Any further comments? Greg?
Fritz, yes.
Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes?
Venus.
And five to nothing on that one. And then our final one tonight is Article seventeen, which is the vehicle expendable trust fund, surplus funds to go to. Continue to fund our ability to uh purchase new vehicles for the district and then maintain the ones that we have in this trust fund. I will take a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Any uh other questions or comments? Start the vote with Greg.
Fritz, yes.
Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes?
Venus.
And that one is five to nothing as well.
Did we vote on twelve? We voted on.
No, we started thirteen. It was Amy had to go through and change the language, so we'll go back to twelve now. And you're all set, right? It looks like.
I'm going to refresh?
Yeah, she has to refresh, Steve.
We have to re-vote and move to deliver.
No, we already amended our original.
We amended it, okay, perfect.
And now we're just going to recommend the article.
Amy, can you say, is that right? Or is that not refreshed?
Yep, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so Article twelve has been amended from. What we had moved to the deliberative, so now we are, we have already amended that with the new financing in their level debt at twenty years. Uh, so the first three years of the warrant are on there and in the voter's guide and the deliberative guide, it will be hammer home that this is an estimate. And this will be, uh, obviously it's folded on there as well. That is how it will appear on the warrant. So I will take a motion to approve this as presented.
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any, any further discussion on this one? Okay, so I'll start with Greg for the recommendation vote. Fritz, no. Gothier, yes?
Gaspoint, yes.
White, yes?
Venus.
And so if you caught that, Amy, it's four to one with Fritz opposing and then four yeses.
Great, thank you. So um. I'm going to leave and go host the Ways and Means uh meeting, because I know they need to vote on this warrant article as well. But just be aware uh that the board will need to sign the warrant, uh, the. Department of Revenue Form Budget and the Default Form Budget. So I will be sending those out via PandaDoc likely first thing tomorrow morning. Um, we're in a little bit of a time crunch because per the RSA, I need to post those documents. All over town by Monday. Um, so if the board could take a look in their uh in in your emails. Tomorrow and over the weekend and make sure that you sign those or ask me any questions. But it will just be the warrant as voted with the tally votes and the tax impacts. Um, as well as the budget form and the default form.
Perfect, thank you, Amy. And I'm looking through this bond financing deck. Uh, there was information there about the status quo, was that taken out?
That's in a different deck, because I think you guys are discussing that during communications.
Communication section of the meeting.
Perfect, that's, thank you, man. Great.
Yeah.
That's all I needed. So thank you, Amy.
Okay.
Do you have any next few?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave, Steve, and then I'll be back.
Put her back.
Don't forget that.
Want me to throw you out?
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Yeah, you can go out and come back. How about Ian?
Okay.
So our status quo, project report will move to the end. Uh, we'll move on to our next item tonight, which is our financial audit. So I'll invite Matt Maria from uh Clukey Vashon. You can go up here and sit in the chair there, Matt, and then I'll let you. Uh, open up with your overall findings and the board can ask any questions. Everybody has the report here, the hard copy of it. Um, feel free to start.
Tom said, I'm Matthew Murray from Vashon Clukey and Company. Um, so.
Everybody out.
Oh, I know, it was a mass exodus.
The fun part, huh?
I got, I got.
Everyone knows.
A little bit less nervous when there's not as many people.
Oh, good.
Uh, so, most important part, uh, proportion of the audit, uh, for the board, for the public, is the opinion on the audited financial statements. We're pleased to say that we have an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements, which means that um. We didn't have any sort of material misstatements in the financial statements and all the required disclosures are there. The portion that everyone's concerned with is more or less like, how did the district perform on a budgetary basis? So page twenty-seven of the financial statements, it's the schedule revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget and actual. And what this does is basically all the forms that, like what Amy was talking about, you guys are going to have to um sign something. It's the items that are set by the vote of the public. To the estimated revenues that are submitted and then ultimately that guides how the district can operate during the course of the year. And within the con- uh confines of the budget, uh, on a budgetary basis. The district had revenues in excess of the uh estimated amount. Of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is roughly one point three percent. So you got an additional one point three percent in revenues compared to what you anticipated to. Um, with the largest portion of that coming from the charges for services and I apologize. Didn't dig into the detail before I came here, but I believe that that had to do with the shared costs where the district sent somebody out to another. Um, whether it be to South Heagan and the district invoiced them for that. Um, so it was the the shared tradesmen, things like that. Um. And then as far as. What really would cause problems is. Did the district overexpend its appropriations? And for fiscal year twenty-four on a budgetary basis, the district was under its, uh, under its est- uh, its. Budget by about one point two million dollars, which is approximately three point seven percent. And kind of what, what we see across some of the districts is anywhere from, you know, some districts will cut it extremely tight. And they'll be at less than a half a percent and some of the other, some of the other districts where we've seen, um, you know, just. Overall projected costs, they ended up coming seven, eight percent under the budget, but for the most part. Districts fall within that two to four percent. Underneath the budget, so you, the the district actually falls within that amount. So you're on path with your projections and it allows. It allows you to be able to do those things like where you were voting on the warrant articles earlier, something to come from surplus fund balance. Um, and that basically. Makes it so that you've already raised the taxes and gotten additional revenue sources from prior years. That you're then putting back into your capital reserve so that you can plan for your future needs. Do appreciate the fact that you guys do that. My town personally, I don't think does a great job of that. Um, as far as the district's overall financial statements, on page one is the, is the statement of net position. And set it past, you know, two years is. And set it past, you know, two years is you look at your statement of net position and you see that you have a giant deficit. Um, that is entirely driven by Gatsby standards where you're reporting the retirement system's unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities. Within your financial statements themselves, so that is based off of your contributions in, in comparison to everybody else's contribution and the planned funded status. Um, as calculated by the actuaries to project the liability and what they have for actual assets. Um. There is supposed to be some level of, of a, there was a goal that they would get to it over a thirty-year period. Um. I can't remember if that's supposed to be sometime in the twenty thirties. Um, but if you look at, to give you a rough idea, um, schedule, choose pension, okay? Uh, page thirty-one. Um. Shows the district's uh, proportionate share of the net pension liability. Uh, the actual liability for the, the past ten years that you've been reporting in your financial statements. And the column all the way to the right at the top is the plan's funded position. And one of the things that's kind of been driving that, you'll see, you know, it was in twenty fourteen and sixty-six percent and then in twenty sixteen, it's all the way down to fifty-eight percent. So some of the things that drive that are when the actuaries recommend that they use a new discount rate. So when we first started to have to report this, it was seven point seven five percent. Then they got them to actually decrease it to seven point two five percent and now it's at six point seven five percent. There's, I believe, for, if it's not this next valuation coming up. Um, it will be the following one and the actuaries will probably, you know, based off of the plan funding status and what they project. They may tell them that you're okay, you can keep that discount rate at the current discount rate. Um, but hasn't really fluctuated a whole lot, uh, been kind of in that sixty to, you know, sixty-five to seventy percent. Um.
Is that good or bad?
Uh, so. The, the planned funded status and what the actuaries are projecting, a lot of the times are going to drive what your contribution rates are. So every two years, the retirement system sets new rates for funding. Um. I believe in the most recent one, they actually decreased it slightly.
Two in a row now, haven't they?
Yes, I, I think the.
Twenty-one to nineteen to seventeen, maybe?
Yeah, it's kind of exciting when it went down first.
Because the, the one before what you were referencing, it was, it was, it was substantial increases. I think police and fire went up like close to thirty percent, just in what the, um, the towns had to contribute. And I think the teachers were closer to, you know, like eighteen to twenty percent. So a lot for, because the state no longer contributes to the retirement system as it did at one point. It's a lot for the taxpayers to swallow when you have such high increases. But that's something that's beyond your control. Um, and what's, one of the things that's important to note is those liabilities, it's not something that, you know. You, you can't just raise thirty million dollars, not that you ever would, but through a warrant article to pay your unfunded share. Then if you do that, you're allocated a substantially higher proportionate share for that one year. Um. You know, and another thing that's making it harder on all the municipalities is you're starting to get some of them where. The full-time positions that were occupied by people are the municipalities rolling it back and they're filling it with part-time individuals, which means that there's less contributions coming in, which makes it harder for them to meet the, uh, the payout needs of the retirees. Wanted to see specific information on the, on pension and OPEB and the notes to the financial statements, I believe that it is note. Five, where it talks about both the district's share of the retirement system and your single employer OPEB, which is an implicit, um. It's an implicit amount because under state law, you can't provide age-adjusted premiums. Everybody's part of a pooled plan, so where you get the people who are younger, maybe their, their share of what the actual cost towards health insurance is is slightly higher. Because you've got your individuals who are in their forties, fifties, sixties, they're paying slightly less because everybody's part of an overall pooled rate. And the actuaries have to take that information and utilize that to project out essentially what it's creating a liability for the district that. You're similar to the retirement system, you're never going to be able to just, here you go, here's a giant funded amount. Um, nobody in the state actually does any private funding into an OPEB plan.
Hello?
Let's call up.
Um, as far as like, uh. Believe that this, this year was the, the first year where, um. Were able to get things done in a more efficient manner. Some of that had to do with the fact of the changeover in the staff at the SAU office. Um, actually, I know for the twenty-three audit. The SAU staff had a vacancy in a position for a little while. And filling it with Lisa, who you guys are, as far as the district and the SAU, you are extremely fortunate to be able to have somebody who's a CPA on staff. Um, you know, kind of keeps you guys in line, makes things easier on us as far as she knows exactly what we're looking for. Um, and, and doing all the year-end approvals. Uh, as far as one of the things that we had just a management recommendation on, um, is student activity fund deposits. So originally we end up testing the activity of the student activity funds, the money coming in, being deposited as well as the amounts, um, being expended out of the student activity funds. Uh, most common write-up that we do find with school districts, it's because it's outside of the control of the SAU office, it's handled at the schools. So in the, during the current year audit, as part of testing our receipts, uh, we noted five instances where receipts didn't contain dual signatures. And one of the reasons why we say dual signatures are important is you got one person who says, this is what I collected. And you have a second person who is verifying that before it's actually going and being deposited. And we had two instances where the funds were received, but they weren't deposited within the school week of the receipt. And we basically say, like, your best practice, you don't want cash hanging around, cash checks hanging around for an extended period of time. So if you get something in on Monday, get it to the bank by Friday. That's best practice and alleviates the potential for any theft misuse it, to occur. Um. When we brought it up to the SAU staff's attention, um, they actually said that they were going to have Lisa, who's one of the staff members at the SAU, go out and preach and teach the individuals at the school about the importance of it. And I believe that she's since done periodic spot checks.
Thanks for bringing our attention and thanks to our staff for taking care of that.
Questions?
I have a follow-up on the student activity fund, but it's, it's more for an internal question.
Okay. Good, thank you. Sorry, Jason?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you coming, Matt, and appreciate you sitting through the opening part, wanted to make sure you've got that done, so Ways and Means could vote tonight, so till six-thirty, plenty of time for dinner.
Yep, I'll still be home before I normally am, so. My wife will be happy, it's early night now, you can enjoy some alone time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on now tonight, we have our consent agenda. I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda at consent. You want to do that now?
Do you mind?
No, I, I didn't know if it was, yeah, perfect, I didn't know.
It should be quick and it may be for Amy, so if it is, I'm happy to wait, um. Student activity funds primarily sports at the middle school, is that right? Sports and field trips?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm curious if streamlining the process would help with some of that time to get it, like at South Heagan. I know that all of those activity funds go through, um, Mike's smiling.
My school box.
Go through my school box and I'm curious if that's affect, if we found that to be more effective in the collection and, you know, the, the process. And if that's something that we've looked at doing in Amherst, or maybe there's a reason we don't, you know, I just, that's my question.
Yeah, I think.
We don't have an answer for it.
We don't have an answer for it right now, but it is a, is very much a topic that is been discussed internally as, is that something we can do? And historically, they haven't done it at AMS that way. And so we're looking to see going into the next year, is that something that can be considered, why or why not? So it's a fair question.
Yeah, I think I, I would really be interested as a board member to learn more, um, because I, you know, I know there's also an invoicing feature that can make it easier to collect. I see, I know as a parent, the process at the middle school tends to be the coach kind of lets you know, this is your fee and at some point you drop it at the office of your kid. So I appreciate that it's an efficient process on that side of it through my school box. And if it makes sense on the, the backend of it, all the better.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike, uh, getting rid of cash, getting rid of checks, not handling money is right, cash is death, but everything else is more efficient. Um, what many districts did when the, my school box entered and it was mostly high schools, that's where most of the fees were. Uh, was to, uh, have the district swallow the fee. We paid the trick, because the transaction fee is not little on my school box.
Right.
Um, and we did that to encourage because it, we would actually, we own it because we would save so much on the efficiency of it. And I think that's the discussion, that's Mike and Amy, um, talk about this, does, and how they want to deal with the fee, just having more on it, because we benefit. That's what most districts did and I think many steel districts continue to, to pay the fee because it's just so important and it is not little.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, I think you're right. Efficiency, get rid of cash, get rid of checks, handle it, if we have time for other stuff announcements, so I think I'm sure, as Mike said, it's in the queue.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to the consent agenda tonight, five items in there. We had, uh, minutes from November eighteenth and December nineteenth and then two, uh, blocks of unanticipated revenue, one for food service, donations to pay off low fund balances. Uh, that was an anonymous donation and we also had about eighty-eight hundred from the Amherst PTA, which is, uh, very significant, purchasing twenty-four iPads with the requisite cases, cart and licensing for Clark Wilkins. So a special thank you to, to both of those groups, the anonymous donor and the PTA, those are obviously come in very handy. And then we also had a, a couple of policies that were approved that we read for the first time at twelve nineteen and now just accepting these as, um, final approval. So I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Wait a second.
I'll second, I only, just for voting purposes, I'm fine with everything, but I would like to be able to abstain from number four, because I think that would be.
That's four. The, uh.
January fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Oh.
Public hearing and bonding notes.
Why don't we pull that and vote on that separately?
Well, uh, wait, um, yeah, it's my gentleman updated?
I don't think.
January fourteen. Okay, I missed, I missed that one, so, okay. So let's, uh, can you amend your motion, motion, Shannon, to accept items one, two, three, five and six? Can you pull six, uh?
We're doing that.
You want to pull six?
Pull six and four.
So one, two, three and five.
Any others before I make the?
No, no, I'm saying like, you want to include seven, that's the policy.
Oh, and seven, including seven.
Yeah, seven, I was just listening.
Okay.
I, I looked at this last night, it's not like this, so I apologize for.
Um, to accept the consent agenda, I had almost one. Someone listened to me, so I.
I hear you.
Oh, thank you.
One, two, three.
Two. Three. Five and seven.
I'll second.
As presented.
Correct. So we have a second for that, any further conversation on those? Okay, all in favor? Five, nothing. All right, so item number four, Jason, you wanted to abstain from that, so anybody, uh, can I get a motion to accept item four as presented then, uh, knowing Jason can't make the motion?
So moved.
Can I get a sec?
One second.
Okay, uh, any further question on the bond public hearing and meeting notes? Okay, all in favor? Four yeses and then Jason states.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for catching that and apologies for not refreshing my browser this afternoon. Uh, last one, Greg, number six, you had.
On the iPad, yes. Yeah, yeah, so, um, I want to ask, um, Mike and Steve, like what? What, what class is this for? Is this an additional screen time for the young students or is this replacing iPads? What is the status?
Yeah, this is, uh, this came through a request through the PTA. Uh, to add additional, uh, iPads to Meg Merle's, um, cart and program as she continues to do her job with, uh, the kids in her role as the tech integrator, Clark Wilkins.
So this was a grant request?
Yep.
This was a grant request?
Yep.
How, so who, who, or who, where's the origin of the?
Meg Merle.
I can agree, maybe did it. Makes sense, I guess, um.
Enhance her program.
Yeah, okay, it's, she couldn't have enough for what she wants to do or?
Right, she wants a different ratio.
Okay. Yeah, all right, I guess it makes sense, I, I, I just, um. You know, my, my kids get more screen time at your school than at home. So I, I, I just, I don't like having, I can tell their behavior like at home, if they, they had screen time in school today, so. I don't, I think we have great teachers and I think we can teach it up without iPads. I remember the story, uh, when I was working in tech, Steve Jobs went to a, uh, a underdeveloped land and ran some young children and showed them prototypes for the, for the iPads. And they couldn't quite figure it out and then he went back to a different village, a few years, like a year later, whatever it was, and they intuitively swiped and they were playing the games, they knew how to work cool stuff. So I always thought that was a religious story that it's when your kids are good at these things. It's not that your kids are good at these things, that these things are good at, at tying into your kids' brains. And I think there's a lot better ways to educate during the school day, so I, I support technology education, I just, I've really, like, and screen time is already something we didn't, shouldn't be doing. So I hate to, hate to be against all this stuff, but.
But I guess for me with this one, it's for the technology.
I know, I know, I feel like, I feel like you're saying technology.
Like a Wyatt time feature, I would.
Yeah, I prefer that you're writing code too, but I don't know if that's.
We'll have to do on a, on a screen still, right?
So that's what kind of, kind of my rub is, is, uh, trying to understand how they're gonna be used, but if it's Meg's requests and that's what people are understanding or district is doing, you know, I think. My mistake, you, top of where I left it is like, you know, as a parent, I'm opposed to any screen time at school actually, but, um, if this is what the people want, I guess, you know, that'd happen. I'll probably vote no, but you guys will, yes, so it'll go through.
You know, I, I hear you and I think I'm, I'm certainly open to them, not in relation to this, where this is the technology person, it's a technology class, we've left for this, but. I'm certainly open to a broader conversation about technology, the benefits or, or harms of it in the schools. I mean, right now, right, Clark Wilkins is doing a, a book read on the ancient generation, which is all about what you're talking about, Greg. It's all about how technology rewires the brain and how it has social media and how it's, all the screen time has caused harm to children. Um, so I'm definitely open to a broader conversation about technology separate from this, I think this is a separate piece, which coming from the technology teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
Class. And so that's why I'll support this, but I certainly think that, you know, at some point in time, a broader conversation.
Kind of enough before we start, Mike, is I think what Jason's saying, I think it's be parcel cleaner, because I think that, that book I read too. It talks about screen time, all talks about how, how it was to use, so more of it's like internet-based and like social media-based, so it's not a lot of screen. But I, you know, I think that there's, there's, you know, super passive ways to use screens, just doom scrolling. And then there's like active ways to use screens, like coding, you mentioned, right, interacting code. And there's, you know, just kind of reading a book where your mind's still somewhat active, so versus like watching cartoons. So there's different ways that screens can be used, so.
Yep.
I thought that's like, what is this used for, but, um, I think you agree with that differential, it's not, yes, screens is the utility.
Yeah, and, and, you know, on previous agenda and meetings we talked about, uh, kind of a task that we're gonna kind of go on, um. And you know, mindful, you know, technology, kind of task force and learning more a little about it, uh, throughout SU thirty-nine. And it's not limited to, to cell phone, people think it's just, just.
Yeah, no, it's a whole license.
It is, it is all the devices you use, uh, and how often they're used and what classes they're used and how teachers interact with them and what we ask kids to do with them and teachers do. Um, there's going to be a, a, a larger conversation, uh, that occurs and that, you know, you know, we talked a little bit about it, front-loaded it with the boards, some of the boards knew what was kind of coming down. And, uh, and so I don't think any educator will really disagree with you, Greg, and your sentiments around it. It's, it's, you know, the world we live in and trying to improve, you know, some of the practices that we have. So great conversation, I just wanted to give people a heads up on that.
And just I, in a, you know, previously served on the grant committee for the PTA, so the process is the grant period, a- and I'm assuming it's still the same, but the grant period is open. Educators can apply for the grants, there's a committee of PTA members that goes through the grants. Then they meet with the administrator at the school to discuss, you know, is this something, you know, your, one of your teachers has applied for this grant, does this mesh with what you're doing? And then it gets voted on and, and then so like, there, there's that process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comments on that? So can I get a recommendation to accept, uh, item number six? So can I get a recommendation to accept, uh, item number six as presented tonight, the unassigned fund balance from the PTA? I'm not, sorry, uh, not, uh, donations from the PTA. I'll make the motion, get Jason with the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Shannon with a second, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Two, three, four, and all opposed? Great, so four to one, please tonight. Thank you for the conversation, that's great. Um, alright, reports received, facilities, treasurers, enrollment data, calendar and principals reports. Any questions for Mike or Steve on these, Jason?
I just had one on the calendar and, and I might have missed it. And Steve, you'll really appreciate this question, I think this is like in your real house. So previous calendars, we used to have, and I noticed it's not on this one, and I'm wondering if it's. And if we can't talk about this publicly, I understand, I wonder if it's because of the contract, but we used to have. Snow days on the calendar, it used to say. If one snow day, this is the last day to, and I didn't know. This is the first year I noticed it wasn't there.
Yeah. The, um. So.
May- maybe that's, yeah, I, I just didn't, I didn't know and again.
Similar language in other agreements.
Yeah.
That issue was contested. And, um, was, it was determined that based on the current contract language, snow days, not the other. So first five.
Okay, but we, don't we still usually put them on there just to say if we go beyond five snow days, we still have these, or we just, we're just not going to put them on there at all?
It was, at, my per- opinion is that it confused people in the community because they weren't, they were like, what is?
They always raise the question, or snow day is going to be, wait or not, so is this just for clarity then?
Correct.
Okay.
And now if we, if we have. Building related. The last three days because of. You had a leak.
Yeah.
Or if we had seven. We would communicate with the, the community. Exhaustingly and say we've extended this year.
And update this calendar.
Yes.
Love the question.
I know you, I see you.
The preface, I don't, I looked through all my notes, previous meetings, we haven't seen it.
That's what I thought, usually I thought we did.
No, we, well, um, we, we're going to probably have a change of practice, we, it'd be years past. Have voted for calendars, um, at the SEU, however, we have three districts with three different calendars. The, the CBAs and the agreements, and so, um, if, so we are going to do it the local.
Yep.
District level. And, uh, so this is the first time you're seeing it, if you look in the board's note, you know, Steve did a nice job of kind of outlining like a, for the CBA, this is what reflected in, in the contract. And, uh, the reason I, I think we're not further along. As a multi-district SAU and who has to partner with other places. And want to try to partner with different organizations in our community as well, so it's not only school districts. But it's the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, and then it's Milford, you know, as to sync up schedules that are better for parents and, and, uh, so. But you have all the major information to take that, if you have any questions, when we come back again, we can dig in a little further. Um, but we got the main elements in this and.
Just great, we're, we're very.
To labor love. Steve loves it, I am different.
But you also added, I, you know, the mid sixteen, over sixteen hours of instruction data, if you're good.
But are we, are we, are we down to four?
We are, well, three plus the, uh, three plus the last day of school.
Yeah, I thought we were, I thought by the end of the contract, we went down to four, it started four early releases.
Yeah, three plus the last day of school counts.
They're saying this is a decrease of four.
Says a decrease of four, so we're going to be a total.
It's not a decrease. Seven, this is where it's funky, if we talk about those who are from professional development.
Yeah.
So we subtract, we add the last day of school is a function. Right, we used to have ten for professional development and not the last days.
So we had eleven, we're building off of.
Yes.
Okay, so we're building off eleven, so three regular ones and then.
The last days.
Last days.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and so thank you, I.
Also that one, the first week of school.
But yeah, we only have four now on the calendar though. It's just like, it was what.
That's correct, we have three for professional development and one for the principals to have the last days.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think I did that well, but I appreciate you guys understanding.
Family will, will embrace that, they, they, they serve a purpose, they know, but they are not wild and hunky or so.
That's really where the pickup at. The school is hard time to, well, it's problems, really, those part days, it's not.
Yeah, no, it's not smooth, no one knows what time to get there, it's. Principals are really happy, um, like we, we, we lost it and we took it like November. We used to have to do an early release, Veterans Day, parent teacher conference and Thanksgiving. Now we don't have that early release, that little thing is good, we, you know, and, so it's better. And I think this is, you know, Mike will figure it out, so I think we're worth paying.
Okay.
I appreciate the force.
So, eh, eh, we don't need to vote on this, it could still be, right? It's not just a draft that you're going to have, okay, thank you. Good, Mike, you mentioned the Boys and Girls Club, that they have, so to get the busing from Wilkins down there, they have to align with Milford. Half days, um, do you know if this calendar matches their calendar?
We're working on it.
We're working on it, we are in a conversation with, uh, the SAU over in Milford.
Okay.
Um.
And the releases may change.
Yeah, and we're, we're taking a look at that. The other piece of it is with that. With some shifts in the transportation.
Right.
That could change some.
Yeah, I think they have their own bus and it's not felters, they use their own bus.
And so. Yeah, so there's some things that we might be able to do, there's some moving parts around.
Okay.
So we'll keep that up.
Thank you, good.
And with early Labor Day, it's no days in August for students, for students, all, all are going to be starting September.
Less time though.
So welcome back, Dave, teacher thing, it's not a student.
Well, we have to be careful with that, Steve, too.
Right on, so that'd be a conversation for next year as part of the negotiations, correct?
Right.
Yeah, but.
Glad to revisit it at least, because we can only start so many days before, like.
I swear, good memory.
So to your point, yeah, we're starting with students this year at, for the twenty-five, September twenty-five, after Labor Day. On this, on the, on the second, and then we're doing all the back to school stuff, as you notice, starting the week of the eighteenth. And, uh, that's throughout SU thirty-nine, we've kind of lined that up and then, um, all of the same start dates, the last day. Of school that changes depending on the CBA, and then some of the early releases and things like that based on CBAs. So we'll continue to work on this and, uh.
Does that mess up, starting late like that, later, does that mess up any kind of exam schedule for AMS before Christmas? Are they able to get?
Yeah.
Testing done before Christmas?
Yeah, they're alright right now with that.
And I like that we're, uh, just, if I share my opinion is, I like that we're not taking off the entire week of Christmas and that we're not taking off the entire week of. New year, because in Massachusetts, they did, at least my sister's school in Mass, they took off for the twenty-first or the twenty-second and then go back until the.
Two to two weeks?
Yep, it took a full two weeks, so I'm like, in thirty years, I've looked at it twice. As a kid that hated winter and still does, I'd much rather go to school in January than in June, so.
I'll keep that in mind as for future development.
Yes.
Uh, alright, moving on to our next item tonight, we have committee updates, any, uh, committee updates? That we want to bring to the board tonight? I think at this point, we're slowing down just simply because we have deliberative voting day coming up, and obviously these will kick back up after the new board is set in March. Needed set. Like, I don't know what the word is, but.
Well, yeah, we'll be.
Yeah.
Whatever.
We have seated. Seated. That, yeah. There will be an opening on Building and Browns, at least one opening, uh, we did have a resignation from that, um. So that board is not, that's not needed for any decisions right now, but once we get to pass elections, they will have to have at least one new position for that. Uh, we had somebody resign from that, but they're not doing any voting work between now and election day, correct?
Christine just scheduled the meeting.
Okay. But they're still, we're not going to be looking at a new member appointed by then anyway, I would presume, so at least not in a, like, process, so. Um, no other updates then? Okay, moving on to communications tonight, so the big, uh. Couple pieces on there, Mike, do you want to touch on anything before we?
Yeah, you'll see, uh, uh, two documents in there, one we'll get into in a second, but the one I. Uh, we had, uh, Katie, Gary, and Chelsea kind of work on is just another communications overview of some things that you can see, um. Working on some dates to finalize, but, uh, we did want you guys to see some of the communications. Um, that are going out around budget met, you know, budget framework, uh, partnering with the community. On various things, Wilken, you know, Wilkins project. Um, some facilities work. So you'll just see these things and, and so just want to give you guys a little bit of a window in on that, um, as you kind of get into. This, you, the, there's a really important information session where we think on the twenty-ninth. Uh, that we would like the board to, you know, whatever they can to attract people to, to attend on the twenty-ninth. We think that's a meaningful conversation, uh, we have some, some guests to, you know, to help us out, Roger will be in attendance. Um.
TW.
TW will be there. And, uh, so we're in, we're hoping that that is a well attended, we've had some pretty good attendance at the previous information sessions. Um, so we have that and then, uh, you'll see throughout, um, February and March, uh, some lis- listening sessions about. The framework and the budget work, um, you'll see some coffees trying to target certain audiences. Have coffee with the superintendent, you'll see the superintendent speaking at various groups. Throughout Amherst, uh, in South Heaton School Districts about the direction of the SAU. Um, so more to come, but it's a, it's a incredibly, uh, full. Time of year, and I'm learning that as the superintendent and Steve and I kind of talk about it, you know, um. Lots of engagements, lots of, uh, events, lots of things to be at, lots of things to talk about. It's a sign of a healthy organization that you have, you're working and you're doing things. But, um, I just need you to know, I appreciate how you balanced last night. You know, where Greg and Terry took and then Tom and Shannon, you weren't there, I think that is healthy. I think that is, you know, principals aren't here tonight, you know, and, uh. You know, I was here and Kristen was leaving at five and that's great, so she's not here. So the more we can do that to make it sustainable for people, so as we have events. Please, and we ask for school board representative, it's not all five of you, it could be one of you, it could be two of you. So just please keep those things in mind as we talk about the various, you know, things of work around here. And I just appreciate all that, so that's my update and I'll answer any questions as you guys go through your conversations.
I didn't really have any questions, like Mike, um, Mike.
Mike, going to email list is a, is a, been a challenge, I know, so have you thought about putting like, I just put the website, the main, as you, they're not at work. I don't see like a, like a squeeze page to, to sign up for our email list, get your permission. You know, like, there, there may be some way we can get people to.
So it goes through waves, i- i- it gets sent out, right, and I mean.
No, I think you have like a, like have it on here permanently, so like.
I mean, it, it was on the landing page for like a hundred and twenty days, we just took it off.
Oh, okay.
Prior to Christmas.
Okay.
I'll put it back on the landing page, um, we're trying to make.
Did you get any hits on that here?
So from this year, and I don't have the exact number, so it's, it's, it's an ish, steal a line from Steve, it's a, it's an ish, but I think we're about a. Since we made the, uh. The, since we went through the process to attract more.
Yeah.
Um, we've added, uh, two hundred and fifty subscribers to our list, at the beginning of the year. Um, and I was at the, you know, South Heaton Valley Women's Republican and passed the paper round and got six or seven more. So, uh, we just keep, you know, when we do that, we're building off of that, we're, we're really tied with not having. An, an online, you know, presence with a Amherst citizen, we don't have, you know, things to do that, um, you could probably see us. Wanting to put some money into communications to get things out like newsletters or framework or mission work out to the community at large. Uh, more to come on that, um, but it's a, it's a constant. Journey, Greg, to try to get that and, you know, I think you're right, landing page right around now. February one wouldn't be the worst thing to put it back up there.
Legal to put up.
Yeah, I'll put it on the notes.
Line up here.
I'll put it on the notes, we'll be good.
Yeah, yeah, like if we were walking in, like, want to be on our son, email list, like scan here, I mean, just. Probably the people already on the list, because they showed up, but.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
The town voter guide did have a QR code on it last year, uh, but it was the election information page, but we could certainly link it even to the homepage, I'm sure, so we can put something on there.
Yep.
Okay, uh, next project is the, it's still under the communications, uh, wasn't sure we're really to put this, but I thought it was a good place to, for us to discuss, knowing we had to get through the votes earlier. So the status quo project, Amy did provide a report in the, um, estimates, uh, or a report in the agenda. This is high level, very rough estimate, uh, what the status quo project plan and, and funding plan would look like. If the bond were to fail in March, uh, this is what that thirty-four million breaks down to, how it could potentially be financed, these are only estimates. And obviously this would be a, a recommendation and a process that would go through the board, probably go through Building and Browns, go through the administration. Looking at, uh, financial stability of this, looking at what increases are coming in, again, comparing it to what other projects are needed at AMS as well. But this is what that thirty-four million breaks down as. Amy is back on, uh, Amy, you crafted this with Roger, so if you'd like to speak to it, if you want to go through the slide deck, if you want us to ask questions first, I'll, I'll take your lead on how you'd like to present this.
Yeah, I can just quickly go, go through the few slides, um. And then, and, and thank you, Tom, yeah, this is very high level, it's definitely estimates, um. Roger had worked with DEW to get these estimates, um, on what, what. What projects would potentially need to happen should the building project fail? Um, so that thirty-four million has, has, uh, been in the presentations. So this is just a high level of what those projects are and when they would potentially need to be completed. So that's this first slide, it just has the projects, the timeframe and the cost. Uh, if you go to the next slide. This just provides a, a possible scenario for, uh, financing those three different, um. Groups of projects, so we lumped it into three different potential bonds, um, the principal amount. Um, the interest and the total cost, this is based on level debt financing, obviously we'd have. Um, a more in-depth conversation about how the financing, um, would take place, so. I, I just, I had to use a lot of assumptions as far as interest rate, um. And, uh, and the terms for these different bonds. And then just looking at, uh, you know, a rough estimate. Of what the annual payment would be for those three bonds and the, uh, annual tax impact of those bonds. So there's a lot of, uh, financing considerations as well as project considerations, so. Um, going this route, we would have interest rate risk, obviously, because we'd have multiple bonds. Over this twenty-year period, uh, there is a caveat that you typically need to spend down. Um, the bond typically within three years, so. We would probably have to look at chunking out when, um, amounts to borrow within. Each of those bond periods. Uh, we should consider the fact that the school would be under construction most of the year. Possible we would need additional temporary portables because we don't have, uh, a, a, a mobilization plan completely fleshed out. As this isn't the direction that the board has, has recommended. So again, these project costs are high level, they're based on building square footage, based on the existing equipment. And we would need to do an in-depth, um, cost comparison in order to, to have the costs, uh, more fully fleshed out. Um, in terms of the project considerations. Uh, these are what, what we would, what you would be receiving as an end product would be upgrades to the current structure and equipment. Uh, there would be asbestos abatement, we need to be phased in, that's in the first, uh, five years of this project plan. Um, as I said, you would need multiple mobilizations to complete all of the work, um, moving classrooms in and out of portables. Um, so student relocation to those portables would be required. Uh, the square footage of the building does not change, um, it's likely that we would need additional portables, um, for space needs and an office trailer. The bathrooms, um, are not ADA compliant and. What's included in, in that thirty-four million does not bring bathrooms into ADA compliance. Uh, as you know, the fifth grade would remain at AMS. Traffic and parking would remain as status quo and there would be no additional gym, uh, or playground space as part of the project. So what was asked, um, from the board was just to take a look at that thirty-four million. And try to provide a, a, a rough financing plan. Um, so that's what I did, but again, this is not a, this. I'm sure that these numbers will change, I can say that.
No, I, Amy, I appreciate it because it allows us to have a good, more educated conversation about this and to see some of the real world impacts of. What it solves, what it doesn't solve, what a financing plan can potentially look like, and obviously it's. That you could, you could do all this in one bond if you wanted to in theory, so there's a variety of ways to skin the cat to get this, but I think it really, the, the slide that means the most to me is what you're not getting. Um, and what questions you open up, you start to mess around in there and fix a bathroom, all of a sudden you're not grandfather and you have to make. Mess around in there and fix a bathroom, all of a sudden you're not grandfather and you have to make it ADA compliant, which means that your doors have to get a little bit wider, your stalls have to get bigger, and last I checked. Can't make a stall bigger if the room doesn't get bigger, so um just as a random, you know, point to pull out of there, so. But it's good for us to have this and we're good to include this in the. Uh deliberative presentation too, I think Shannon, we'll want to make sure we include this in the slides that we do for that, uh and I'm, I'm putting it all together next week, so we can just um. Have it to review and fine tune and stuff, uh but I'll, I, I don't want to take that on, but I think it's good to have this to be able to go over that night, just to highlight some of these points. Any, any, I'm sorry, any questions for Amy as I jump on that, Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you for this because I know that um. Definitely some of the, the earliest parts of these projects, you know, the numbers have, we've really gotten more information every time and they become more refined. And so revisiting it and being able to say, kind of here's how that lines up. Um, is really helpful because we certainly have been asked often, what does that really mean? And what would, what would we have to do, what do we and don't we get, so.
That is also worth learning, a two-year construction zone, uh working in the summer times and during vacation seems to be. More appropriate than an ongoing uh every year construction zone or three out of five and then five out of ten, so uh doing the math too seems like it's less than. Three or five or ten or twelve, but that's just my.
Next week, Tom, at the, whoever goes that next week, we should be talking about that with the, Ben L D W votes, yeah.
Yeah, Amy, thank you, I, you know, I've seen Roger's thirty four million number before and I've actually seen it broken out before, but I've never. We've never had the funding plan to kind of get a feel for what that would look like, so I appreciate that, it's very helpful.
What you want to be, we talked about a billion grounds, you don't want to have bond a lot of money and not be able to use it.
Right.
So we call that dead money, right, sitting there, so how much work can you get done in the school in this manner? Um, and you're doing it pieces and that's why it's broken, we don't, I mean, that's construction management.
Sure.
But at least this is a beginning of it, um.
To kind of what Tom was saying, we could do it all, once you, you know, you probably can't, right, it with this type of work, you have to keep the kids.
If we couldn't do AMS's uh entire HVAC and roof project in one summer, we're certainly not going to do Clark's, maybe it's not four phases, but maybe it's two phases.
Yeah, that's the challenge is i- it, it's really not a complete apples to apples, it's not a thirty four million dollar bond because you can't. You can't renovate the building, um while it's occupied and you can't certainly do all of this work in, in, you know, one or two summers.
The advantage of the Wilkins project, you're building, you know, in behind.
A portion of.
A portion of it, and that doesn't impact the kids, and then you're right, then that's different, this is your, you are literally flying the plane, like your ability to play like flying.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would also argue that this number, if you're actually looking to material, materially change. The experience, which is what we're trying to do with the Wilkins project, this, this doesn't do that. I would argue that this number is probably going to be higher. Even, it doesn't, this doesn't solve any of our space constraints, in fact, it might make it even tighter if you're closing spaces as you're working on.
That's why Amy mentioned additional portables, fifth grade, fifth grade stays in this building, which doesn't exactly have, isn't uh abundant with spare rooms.
And you, and you have to replace the reportables that we have, I mean, we're already at that, really the two portals that we have. You replacing and how much. Yeah, it might include replacing those, but.
At least once.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions?
I know you guys are discussing the same thing, I know. I know the same frustration that, very frustrating for, for things that don't pass, you know, whether, whether this is going to change now or not, but. It's frustrating that we still have these problems that we talked about for so many years, you know, many years, um. If we, hopefully we get, we get something that reflects the guys, we can get a, we can get a popular support for whatever we do to fix that soon, um on the uh. What am I talking about for that? For our facility stuff. I write it down? No, I didn't.
I will just add, probably the next topic, the, the popular support piece you mentioned, Greg, it is worth mentioning that it was fifty four percent last year, so still a majority of. Voters voted for it, yes, yeah, not the super majority, so it's, there is that, that difference there. As opposed to thirty seven percent.
No, you're right, you're right, but it's like, that's kind of, that's almost the worst place to be in some ways, because you need fifty percent to get on. Get new board members on and you sixty percent hasn't passed this thing, so you can be in this death spiral where you have fifty fifty two percent support. And that they also, the board deal that votes for this, for the board members that went to support it are back on, so. Like this year, we had a motion early in the year to keep this planned on, if more members come on next year, they say the same motion. And the public still votes fifty percent, we're in this death power, just continuously putting on people on this board that would do the same thing every year, so. It's really important, I think this year especially, that no matter how you vote on twelve, vote for members who won't do this again, who are going to say, we need to, we need to return back to.
Yeah, let's not get into who telling people who they should vote for, but.
That would be a big shift, but this death spiral is really a dangerous place to be, because the sixty percent, twenty percent differences on those two, those two.
We'll find out March eleventh.
And I think, you know, to your point, I mean, depending on what happens come March eleventh, if this goes, then we're good.
Yeah.
It does, if it doesn't go, then whoever is on, on that board is going to have to live with what that means and that would be. You know, the, the, the second time for this particular project, right, so all the other projects have been some type of variation. So, yeah, I mean, there's going to be, have to be hard conversations about what, what. Like, what, what that means, and so I think it's the fact, I think, for, for me, why we went. With the same exact project again, is that we saw a bond, right, and we saw a majority support. We, that we, that we hadn't seen and we had received feedback, well, every time we say no, you come back to something smaller and we said like. This is quite literally the smallest thing that we can do. And, and have a project, um.
I want to add the asbestos, wh- where is the asbestos going to be um remediated from, is that, is that not the NPR, is that something else?
The whole building is, I've, I've, I don't want to miss.
I don't understand why it's on the budget, why it's on the plan to remedy, because it's in the, the adhesive under the tiles doesn't need to be touched.
Also if you disturb, right, if you're renovating and disturbing.
Right, so it's Roger simply that at some point we're going to have to mitigate this.
If you're going to do any renovating or, you're going to disrupt it, so then you have to plan to abate it. So that's why.
Uh, student information system.
Yes, so uh, as people know, uh we informed uh state thirty nine Amherst community, uh Power School was breached. Uh, we are still working with Power School um to, to uh determine, you know, how their. Analysis of, of the breach is going, uh Brian Miller, our technology, uh information technology director has. Uh, been in a series of conversations, uh Amy Facy and myself, I've sat in, you know, some conversations with the prime access, some other lawyers about like how to move forward. Um, we've seen the board notes, like the, the, the fields, the data that was, you know, breached and, and uh. You see that and um they, we're, like you said, we're in a holding pattern waiting for Power School. To, to release some more information, um and we're still working with insurance. And uh lawyers to figure out if we're doing all the right things, it's a conversation that's happening in multi. Uh, S A Us across New Hampshire, um and this, the way we're responding is the way other S A Us are responding at, at this time. Um, so we wanted to put this in here, update people, we expect to be able to update our community. Um, very shortly with how Power School is moving forward, but until they tell us. Can't do that, so we're adding anything else to that one, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of the information was directory information. So I know Greg wanted to have uh time in a non-public to discuss some of this, because there is some uh information that we can't talk about in public, so. Uh, I assume you still, we still want to do that.
Do I, I have a public comment, okay, and not public, this, this, this forum as well.
Yeah.
Now. Okay, so like I think this content in the board notes is um appropriate to share with the public. And, you know, coming up to speed on all this, um those policies all integrate together too, I think they have a policy. E H A B that applies to this and among other things, it, you know, it cites how to identify and it quotes an RSA three, five, nine. C twenty, and then within there, there's section four, from number four, then C. Talks about type of information obtained as a result, that, that's why this should be, should be shared, and I think. Other things like D talks about the telephone confirmation for you, that actually, you had to have your telephone number on that memo you sent around, actually, so. It's a kind of a minor thing, you email that, I give you email confirmation, e- email information on there, but um I think there's some things that, just as long as you're aware. You know, I'm sure you're um checking with right people more than I, I'm aware of it, but there's usually a few good things here that we didn't do yet, that we should probably um. Review the legal requirements to, okay, that'll talk later about maybe what we can do in response.
Alright. Any other points for Mike? Okay. Uh, moving on to the next item, personnel, we have two retirements on here for F Y twenty five. Uh Patty K Barker and Christine Lone Kruger from Food Service and then two more for. F Y twenty six, Para's at Clark, Diane Desamone, and then at AMS, Deborah Leonard Wisnewski. I will take a motion to accept the retirements as presented with regrets.
Don't move with regrets.
Second, okay, any color you'd like to add, Mike, anything you want to add to that, okay. So we thank them for their time and their service and uh after this vote, wish them the best of luck, all in favor? Five, four, not against, and congratulations to them, I also see we have a maternity leave request, which I didn't actually the first time. Uh, it's from Tracy Mills, so uh any.
Yeah, I just wanted to. You're, you're alright, just put a little bit more information, you know, about what the board's proving, and it's a, a, a little bit of an exception. To the CBA, uh yes, Ms. Mills has not been here quite three years. And so usually this is something that we do for people three years and, and beyond, however, given uh. Situation, relationship uh that uh Ms. Mills has with A, AMS. Recommendation from Christian Gauthier, we're asking the board to approve this maternity leave request, you know.
Maternity leave plus a year's leave.
Yeah.
The combination, maternity leave is pro forma, so. If yearly requires the exception, a waiver of the article, because she doesn't qualify for. Or does that get authority to waive that?
And it is unpaid leave, right?
That is correct, so there's no financial impact other, okay. That was my, my question, so how long has you been in the district? Two years, initial of your third year, correct? Yeah. Okay, any, uh I'll take a motion to accept the maternity leave.
Do we need to make the motion to waive the?
To waive the CPA requires a grant a year's leave, so. Uh, maternity leave, yay, that's one, and then, so truly two months.
We, we have to do two, we can just.
That'd be great, we'd love that, so I'll do a motion to accept the maternity leave of Tracy Mills, seventh grade, E L A teacher at AMS. Jason, Shannon with a second, any further questions on that one, congratulations, yes, congratulations, congratulations, all in favor? Five, four, not against, and I'll take a motion to uh accept the recommendation of waiving article ten, section ten point nine. To allow a full year of unpaid leave for twenty six, twenty, uh twenty five, twenty six.
That's perfect.
I make motion, Jason, Shannon with a second, any further questions on that, all in favor? Four and against. Okay, uh moving on to superintendent updates, Mike.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um. Well, we have a couple things happening, uh as people know, we had a transportation incident yesterday. Um, and all students were released, the, the, the two students that were, went to. They get checked out, were released during the day or home and in good condition, there was a cautionary type thing, um. And I thought it was handled well by the first responders, uh handled well by butlers and uh. You know, fortunate that it, it was, it was what it was and wasn't worse, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew we're good to go.
So handled well by superintendent.
So it was, it was well done by people, so.
Which? What school was it for, Mike?
Uh, it was the second run of uh the buses, so it was AMS and South Heagan students. Um, so the second run, the Clark Focus buses were uh dropped off. Um, I want to have Steve talk a little bit about uh therapy dog. Um, and, and kind of what we're, we're hoping to do here and uh. Um, some, some things that, you know, going on to engage more kids and, and engage certain kids in certain programs, so Steve, you want to just give a, a quick version of that?
We had really good success with Anna at, at, at uh at Clark Wilkins. Um, just to, I'm not really understanding, I've been working in the upper school here, but um John Shuttenger is working with McAdyer, Kristen. To think it's a, a, a real way to engage um some of the youngsters in the program, can connect with, with Maverick. And, and, and Mr. McAdyer, um really a pilot, one day a week, wow, and, and Kristen, Mike. Barry and I, and I can, I will get together to see, it's uh, the assistant principal role is a little bit different at the middle school than it is at the elementary school. Um, but we think it really is a, a connection with kids and support, that's we're excited about it, um but. Because it's a different level and, 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 and this role is a little bit different than Mike's, but we're, we're excited to give it a shot and see how. So it will update you, uh so it's a real, just a path to see, to make sure that he can be, you know, the, the assistant principal role here is pretty nimble, pretty on the spot. And, and just to see how it works, but uh Kristen and, and Mr. McAdyer are excited, and I know Mr. Shuttenger is too, in the program.
I'm sorry, you may have said this and I just, I missed it, is that starting this spring or is that for next school year?
No, no, it's going to start, yeah, it's going to start in a couple weeks, so we notify the board.
For sure.
And then we can give a shot, so we'll report out, um, I, yeah, he's anxious, um, Mr. Shuttenger especially is anxious with the kids to connect with.
So I, I know that this sounds depressing, it's not meant to, but these dogs and going to these programs are not. Free by any means, so these are their own therapy dogs, correct, and they're bringing them in, so there's, the district is not. On the hook for these, or is, I guess that would be the, the next step, if something that we wanted to do with the district in theory could purchase like, much like.
Correct.
Kane Dines, where we purchase a dog, but it goes home with somebody, their trainer, their handler and.
Okay, this is. Christine was doing it, uh with Norman, I don't know if you know, Christine was doing the same thing in hopes to, to do something similar at Chester, we can, I'm right, so this is. Um, it, it's almost like a gratuity, but it's not true to connect the kids, but I'll be completely honest, as a former middle, middle school assistant principal and principal. And my, and Mr. Diagnose, how does, we want to make sure that he has full flexibility to be. We'll get, check it out.
Is Luke still?
He's still here too, yeah. That was that condemnation, I was just, no, asking and finding, absolutely. Right, thanks Tom for that, um, what is the cost of this in terms of the time, like, is this, are you taking those out of classroom time to? Enjoy the dog's company, like.
We think it's going to actually go engage in class, like uh during the reading time, enjoying the social skills and then the program time. So this is going to be enhancing instructional experience for kids, um, yeah, that's it, so it's not, we don't pull kids out of instruction to spend time, we actually integrate the dog.
Okay, it's not distracting, it's more, so I think it's some point.
But, right, in full transparency, we're gonna, we're gonna take, we're gonna, we're going to document and make sure it doesn't feel like.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I mean, I work from my, I work from home and my boss with me, so I, I get, sometimes it's a good interaction, but it's a distracting interaction, so I.
And, and we want to make sure. A hundred percent there, so I was weak for a while.
Well, thank you.
Alright, if you notice in the principals reports, earlier in the agenda, there's always a section around, um. You know, uh administrators in the buildings partnering with teachers to fulfill the, you know, commitment to getting in classrooms. And uh implementing, uh and carrying out the supervision and evaluation schedule and uh something for me. Um, personally, as a, as a teacher, I was better when I was supported and. Had, you know, people working with me and set expectations in a way we're moving as a principal. Uh, people heard me say, I think that is what's, you know, moves the needle in public schools. That relationship of understanding the practices that are being carried out by your teachers and staff throughout your building. Narrowing down like where to put your energies to improve those practices for your age level and your community level and. Uh, where your staff's at, uh so there's a real commitment to getting in classrooms, always has. Uh, been for me, I think that's something that, you know, as administrators, you know, people have done that job before, from Steve to Jason to myself. That's lots of times the first thing to go, get minimized, because you're confident in that people. That's lots of times the first thing to go, get minimized, because you're confident in the people's. Ability to 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 do the work, but when it's done well, when it's done with fidelity, and it's done in a caring, thoughtful manner. It actually cre- really creates the culture and the climate professional environments that you want. Uh, the principals and assistant principals are doing a great job at all three districts. Uh, you can see that and uh, and we, to support that, uh, have conversations pretty regularly with our meetings about. You know, aligning to the framework, line the practices that we think are good teaching, that are high leverage with our administrators. And so one of the things that we are doing, um, and we started today at Mount Vernon, uh, you know, Steve, Liz, Heather and I. Are walking the buildings and spending, you know, time in classrooms to, you know, uh, you know. During uh the school day, watching people work, working with administrators on what they're doing. Um, I think it's really important, I think it's important for teachers to know, like, we think that's the thing, despite all the conversations around budget. Despite all the conversations around facility issues, at the core, we are here. To teach and make sure kids learn, and make sure kids are in good educational environments. And it's the teachers who do that, it's the paraprofessionals who do that, it's the support staff that does that. And we wanna have a a really firm understanding of what's happening, so uh we're making commitments to spend. You know, three, four hours multiple times during the year at each building, to to have an understanding of that, to work more effectively with our building administrators. Uh, so that is happening, um, and uh, you know, very pleased that, you know, every, you know, people are welcoming that partnership from. Staff to building a admin to, to uh. The central office, don't get me wrong, it's, you know, it's not that typical, you superintendent walks into a second grade classroom, everyone knows. Like, who's the guy there, right? You you know, when you have groups of two walking around the building for four or five hours. It does tell everyone, like, this matters, and I'm a firm believer in that, and so I just wanted to update you that what's happening. Very pleased with what's happening around, actually, thirty nine. Um, and I think that consistency is going to create the outcomes that we want and the experience that we want, so. That's that, uh, framework update, uh, plugging along, we hope to have it done by the end of January and uh. Really grateful for the feedback, from the feedback from the parents and uh the staff. Uh, building administrators, community members, selectmen, and we've gotten a lot of feedback, and I do appreciate it, and uh. It's very candid, and uh, we are uh working through that, and we're gonna be really pleased with uh what we produce by the end of. Of of January, and then the transportation update, um, we were talking last night, that January thirty one date, you know, people know that. We're gonna be working a little more directly to Beacon at the end of the month, you know, they were acquired. But, you know, we we don't start our official work with them until the thirty first, and uh so. Can't tell you where we're gonna go for the short or medium term, um, until I dig in there and. More updates there, so that's where we're at, um, superintendent for Tom.
Okay, questions for Mike on anything that he presented or any other questions, Terry?
Yeah, I wanna thank you for taking the time to go and be in the buildings and and really make that connection. I think that. Whether you're going because you have concerns, or whether you're going just to see the successes, I think it's important to just be able to firsthand. Be able to, and I think that when things, when there's, when teachers have things they're really excited about, to be able to share those, to show you in person. It it matters, and to know that you have that interest in being there to experience it, um, matters. And so, thank you for, in a very busy time, if you're um making that priority.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
Possible, maybe, hate to add a negative note, but. To Terry's point, Mike, like, being there, having relationships with people individually, it does mean a lot, and. You know, I understand you rejected my request to meet with the principal, uh, but like, I. Think a lot of us too are trying to our best through what we have, and like, us having more relationship with the. Staff and understanding more, would I think strengthen the the board's decision, and I think probably align more with what you want, because it just. Some of us hear different ways, we communicate differently, and if we personally, that's somebody I communicate pretty well with, so. That was the origin of the request, but.
But I think to that point, Greg, is that it, as a board member with the authority that we have. It sounds stupid to say it this way, but I understand, it's just for a lack of a better way to say it, the authority that we have over Mike. I think there's that impression that it it could be influential, uh, staff members may not be comfortable with that, because essentially we. Supervise the superintendent, so I, and I think it can also potentially. Uh, it breaks the chain of command, where if you meet with a staff member and they start complaining about something, that opens you up to. Uncomfortable situations, because that's not how it's supposed to go, they're supposed to go through the chain of command, so I think it's more along. As a board member, our duty is, yeah, you can have casual relationships with both, you folks, you can talk to folks, but setting up formal meetings with somebody, it can create. Uncomfortable situations from a super standpoint, but also from the staff member, from from a board member, creates some awkward, uh. Relationships, if you will.
It does, I understand, and that was clear in the email, I I did, I I do sometimes understand that, I just, you know, someone trying to. You know, get close to these decisions, it's um. It's nice that you can go in and have these relationships, it's wonderful, I'm just, you know. We're trying, I'm I'm trying, I think a lot of us are trying to do what we can to. Paying the understanding, because a lot of us don't come, so we're Jason, don't come from a profession that's tied to this industry, so. We're doing our best to represent the community, who voted for us, but same time, weigh that with professional needs of the staff you have.
Thanks, uh, did you wanna talk about cell phone? I know you brought it up with Mike, just.
All I wanna say with that was that we're we're aware that at the state level, there's um a. Call a bill, L L T C, what that, there's there's some legal uh document in that may become a bill in Concord. That talks about the relationship between public schools and cellular phones. Um, it's very early, the wording is um gonna be changing, I think is what people are saying, Concord, so I just wanted people to know that we're. Watching that from afar, and we're aware of it, and we have our own internal review prior to knowing the Congress doing that of telephone shifts to um. School time, um. But, you know, we're, we're not in charge of the Concord actions, but we're aware of that, will we, something to whatever comes down.
Yeah, I think whatever plan Mike has talked about a couple of times now that happens over the summer, we'll make sure that we're in compliance with whatever. Bill recommendation, whatever comes down offered.
Yeah, absolutely, it's a, you know, I think. Superintendents are gonna be very aware of of that and what shape that takes. And what impact it has on uh local SAUs and districts. And uh, superintendents, I was at a self-central superintendent meeting and uh. The Department of Education was there and talking through it, and, you know, informed us that it it is uh reminded us. Very early in the process. Um, and we're going to see what comes out of the next couple of months, you know, at the, it's at the state legislature. And then, you know, we'll react accordingly to make sure we're in, you know, compliance, but also at the end of the day, you know, we. We know there's some work to be done around technology, devices, screen time, and uh. And, you know, we're working towards that, so uh I appreciate it, you know, it's a, it's a worthy topic, and I will continue to work on it, so.
Like, my favorite part is the early feedback, is, are we gonna call their kids? None of us went to school where there was a thing called a landline you could call on and speak to somebody, so. All right, uh, take, open up our second public input session of the night, we will do that now. You're online, I don't see, no, I don't see anybody online, so, Sarah Lady, you are it.
Thank you, Michael, I'll meet him in Amherst, uh, citizen, I'll make this really quick, um, and I make these. Um, comments without understanding the full situation with the data breach, um, but I work in IT and highly regulated environments. And I highly recommend looking at leveraging an outside. Uh, security consultant, not just lawyers, um, there's a lot of um best practices around. Um, blast radiuses, separation of duties, where an information system should be separate. So like Power School being sort of an all in one is not always the best practice, it's kind of hard. Uh, for an organization to always get the right tools, they're not necessarily gonna roll their own. So not only looking at the legal aspects and what you're gonna do with Power School, but having a security consultant to make sure that Power School is doing the right thing. Um, is highly recommended. So it it is a challenging space, it's challenging for everybody, even OPM and. And big government has been breached plenty of times, so there's no perfect answer, but by having. More voices in the room to make sure the right things are happening, uh, is highly recommended when building an information system. Especially one for student information and where you have to align with things like FERC and other uh other regulations.
Um, can I comment on that? So, um, so, yeah, I, Mike, I agree and and appreciate that, so as part of our process, we. Um, filed a claim with our insurance carrier, Primex, who engaged with a security consultant, um, the company is called Beasley. Um, and also we have uh legal representation. As well, coupled with the Beasley Security, um, company who is assisting in the security breach. So we are engaging with um, with the attorneys as well as Beasley for all three of the school districts. Primex is covering all of those costs, so uh the districts are not incurring any of those costs, but just so you know that we, we have, um. We are covering that base and and definitely appreciate your comment, Mike.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, so we do have a non-public tonight, uh, so I will take a motion to enter non-public at seven thirty two.
No, hold on, online.
Uh, there's a public online, I'm sorry, I should have addressed that address before, not after. Motion enter non-public, make the motion, we got a motion for Greg, you got a second?
Sure.
I have a second from Shannon, roll call votes, servant Terry.
White, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Gauthier, yes, yes, so we're in non-public at seven thirty two, thank you for coming, everybody, Amy, have a good night, we appreciate it. And for folks that are listening late November twenty ninth, our third and final information session, January.